Okay. Special meeting of council Tuesday, February the 17th, 2015. In terms of the agenda, the agenda before you there, any additions or deletions to the agenda? Counselor Hane?
So, given the motion last night with regards to the court files, should that be on here now?
Certainly with regards to council, council can continue to discuss if there's only outstanding items than was at the last night, but if it's council's role, that can come off the agenda. Start back. Let's do it. Okay, so any additions or deletions to the agenda with Counselor Coulson?
Staff might have an addition. Cheers. Comments in the board?
We were discussing the use of a camera recording the meetings, and because we don't have a policy, if council could do some sort of a motion acknowledging that the meetings can be recorded by camera, and how we all distributed is yet to be determined.
Just procedural question. Add that to the agenda, don't add that to the... You can't have a motion unless we're in a meeting.
Oh. It was that to add to the agenda, I believe, is what Counselor Coulson was saying, a motion to...
I assume there was okay, because this meeting may be recorded.
Okay.
So, I just thought I'd make that given, pretty common with the community earlier.
Okay, so however if we add it between level two and three? Okay. Okay. Okay, so with that addition to the agenda, any further? Somebody want to move the agenda as well?
So, move it.
Counselor Scott, seconded by Counselor Negre, thank you, discussion. We're not in all is in favor, opposed, motion carried. Okay, which gets us to use of the camera.
So, my motion is I'm looking at we allow the meeting to be videotaped, or whatever it is. It looks like a camera.
They don't do tape anymore.
It's a digital thing.
Recorded.
Recorded.
Do you have a second for that? Yep. Seconded by Counselor Negre, discussion?
Just really brief, because we've actually had that happen in the past, and we've had no objection by council, people coming in and recording, except they use the big cameras back then.
Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Allen? Who uses a camera, what purpose? Counselor Coulson?
Just to record it.
Is your personal camera?
It is, yeah.
Okay. So, it's not? District, oh, I think. I mean, the impression will maybe be a district trial. Oh, okay. Official. Counselor Milne?
If it's being verged, it seems fair that we get a copy of it.
Sure.
Sorry, just thought I actually hoping...
Was that a yes? Yes.
Actually, I'm hoping you're going to test this for streaming, right? That's where we'd like to go eventually, and that's the type of equipment they use.
Yeah, ultimately, that's why I thought I'd try, that's just a run-of-the-mill webcam, and I thought I'd test to see the quality of it, the audio and the visual, and then if that, that was like seventy-five dollars, and so if it works, it's quite easy then to put that into a streaming solution.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Well done.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Now, we've got a variety of items on the agenda tonight. Solicitor Don Ledstone's here with regards to these items as well as a later meeting. Just bit of guidance with regards to council, some of these items deal with existing legal agreements, so if, for the open part of the meeting, if we can keep those discussions to items related to operations, planning, and policy, as opposed to questioning specific legal interpretations of sections or any of that nature. Counselor Milne?
I don't want to rehash things, but I'm not sure if that sanction helps us.
So, what do you suggest?
I suggest we keep the discussion on items that have currently been released out of camera, and that's what we're entitled to discuss.
So, when you say items that have been released out of camera, for example, the foothills, the MOU has been released, the Lancelot and Amel water agreement's been released?
I can't tell people at council what they can or can't say, but I mean, you know what the parameters are of what's been released in subsequent council members.
Counselor?
If I take anything that's in the agreement, it's something we can talk about. We release the document, we're signed up on it. When are we ever going to talk about this stuff, or are we not going to talk about it now? So, really, why would we continue to not talk about what's in an agreement that we've signed?
You know, I can take considerable offense to that one, Mark. The implication is certainly not that we're not going to talk about things out of camera. What I'm trying to say is the distinction of policy, operations, and whatever the third item on, that's not the distinction that exists in the legislation, and that's the order of life to follow. So, to the extent that information has been released out of camera, that's what it's supposed to be discussed. If it hasn't been released out of camera, hold on, and it's up to the council members to re-actualize.
Counselor Hane?
Just, just follow up. According to the legislation, I thought under section 117, once the council had released the document, basically it's open to the public then?
Maybe a few... Mr. Ledstone?
Your worship, under section 117, the exemption charter, once council passes a resolution to either release records or documents to the public, or considers a matter in camera that requires a majority, and then considers the same matter arising in court in a public meeting, either one of those will release that particular record or that information to the public. At that point, it's no longer encanished.
So, just kind of for clarification, for example, the Lancelot and Amel water agreement was an item that was released out of encam, was voted on in a public meeting, and so would that therefore then be a public item to discuss?
It is, your worship, the content of the agreement itself, and also whether or not to, if this council wants to exercise its right under the agreement of the water, or in law, which could be the discussion that could go in the public. Any discussion in regard to the relationship, the legal relationship with the Amel, or any issues or any conflicts we're discussing can just be privileged?
For example, a legal interpretation of a section of the agreement would be something would be privileged?
A section 97, for sure.
Okay.
But then after council has discussed it, we made a new decision, that could go arising in court in public.
Yeah, yeah. So, so in terms of, in terms of what's been released, the Lancelot and Amel water agreement has been released, the MOU has been released, and by council, but as I mentioned, the actual legal interpretation of it raises a solicitor-client privilege aspect, so in that respect, that would be considered to be in camera item. Counselor Coulson?
So, clients can waive their solicitor-client privilege, is that done through the rising report? Or releasing the agreement, or signing the agreement? Just trying to co... Because what I'm getting confused with is it almost seems that we're under this solicitor-client concept, or legal notion, just because we've received legal information. But we can do with that what we please, right? Because it's our information.
Sure, it's the same as if you're having a divorce or on the house, it's purely the client, so you have the choice. In municipal law, the decision is actually made by a majority of council as to if, when, and how you want to release something that is privileged and confidential to the public. And that's an important rule, because, for example, if you're in litigation, you don't want the opposing parties to be aware of your strategy, or your tactics, or your commune, or your financial disposition, or such, or proposals for settlement. And so, it's privileged and it's confidential. However, a majority of council feels that they want to have the issue discussed or released to the public, and that can be waived by majority council, but not by an individual staff person, and not by an individual council member, including the sheriff committee, or the mayor, or an individual councilor.
And that waiving would occur within the meeting, because the discussion of the motion could lead to...
Otherwise, it's reached confidential.
Yes, yes. Okay. Chicken egg.
That's why we needed the policy that's not.
Don't go back there. Okay. So, actually, let me ask our solicitor again. My distinction of operations, policy, plan of the district, as opposed to legal interpretation of the agreement, is that an appropriate distinction, recognizing that there'll be some monitoring and comments to make sure something doesn't go over the edge?
Yes, I think everybody is fairly right around the table here, and can ascertain pretty quickly whether or not you're heading into territory that makes it privileged and confidential. The agreement is public, the content, the full debate that took place before that, and the freedom of this council to decide whether it wants to just leave the agreement and do nothing with it, or whether it wants to pass a resolution to explore proceeding in their financial, with the Amel, in the future.
Just clarification, you made reference to full debate before that. Are you talking about the public debate that has occurred, or the debate it created?
The debate of our council, which is continuing on, so you're continuing on from earlier.
Yeah, but...
And that was debated in public, and everyone...
Okay, so the, the public aspect?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify versus debate that happened occurring in camera.
And to specifically answer your question, any of the reclining, finances, operations, public works, whether or not to go ahead with the agreement, that can all... It's true, in a public environment, under transparency, accountability, accessibility, and democracy. But if you're dealing with a particular issue, for example, a potential dispute with another local government or a trust, yeah, something to the aspect to it, or an opinion regarding interpretation, those would be in camera, unless and until a majority of council exercises their right to waive privilege and confidentiality later.
Any further confirmation?
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions related to that conference? Okay. So, first, first, sorry, I just wanted to clear that up, so that we had some directions and parameters with regards to the discussion. So, first item with regards to a draft council confidentiality and conflict policy, that's for discussion, there's a draft policy that actually covers both areas here for council's consideration, questions, and otherwise. In terms of it, I suspect that council members have read it, and stand down, maybe we're just kind of going to questions related to it.
Counselor Hane? Looking at page six, appendix one, and as I read on page four, that appendix one was for notice and formal reservation for an allegation of breach of confidentiality. So, I go to statement three on, item three on page seven. A little surprised, confused, I made it just more surprised to see that there could be a media release at that point, because at that point, they're only allegations of breaches. Guilt has not been established to any level of degree. I guess to me, kind of a poor analogy is, you know, the public school teacher that gets charged with abuse issues against a child or something, before guilt is even determined, the damage is done to that individual. To me, this is sort of a parallel scenario.
Mr. Merritt, for you, I, I certainly agree. I think that the purpose of each of these is to provide a notice to the affected council that there's an allegation of breach of confidentiality, that these are the options that a council may be considering, and therefore be wise for the council member to prepare for, so you don't have to hesitate with council, or at least a week or so after preparation for making a submission to council, to try and convince council not to do anything. But the options for council to proceed in regard to the allegation that the breach of confidentiality would include, you know, the possibility of a select committee to hold inquiry, which is simply within the act, that committee has all the same powers as inquiry officers under the Inquiry Act, and can subpoena witnesses, subpoena documents, cross-examine witnesses, and all that. That's pretty rare in the municipal world, but we've experienced it a few times, and we had a situation in Miami where it was one of the shared central, a few years ago. Also, an independent investigator, that's an action, we're rolling an RCMP for consideration prosecution, and that was one of the issues up in Preacher George, which council escaped him, who was prosecuted in the final, and then he topped the wall with a massive action, or a warning, or no action at all. And then the second possibility is that in addition to those options for following up, doing nothing, doing with those, the council will pursue all the options in the future with respect to that person and his potential breach of confidentiality, which is more like a sort of damage, like a shot across the top, we won't count in existence in future, that kind of... The third one is also totally optional, doesn't mean that you always have to have a meeting released just because someone has on edge. It's, it's an option for you as council, again, it's a question of a majority of council deciding how they want to go with this particular allegation of breach of confidentiality. If I were a council member, I would not want to have any publicity around the matter until it's properly investigated, and council follows through, and decides whether or not they want to do nothing, or whether they want to have an investigation, or have the, have an opportunity for the individual to make submissions, and try and explain what actually happened in the circumstances, and then only have a meeting released if, after all that, council ensures that it was a breach, and has actually been intended to take in some action with sanctions, such as, you know, to sanction the individual, which is a sanction or something like that. So, my personal preference would be in circumstances, that I would hold them as free of the pain of the mentally. But as, as a lawyer, I provide the whole smorgasbord for you to make your decisions, and then it's politically up to you, just the same as the act of making your decisions as well. But it's, this is a draft document for discussion, and you can actually, you know, delete numbers, read all together, and draft, and the policy, the legal asset, that that should go.
Sort of just to follow up to that, so if, if number three stays in, and say the procedural fairness hearing was a bit light, has or could this open up for legal tennis, so to speak, where you now have the council that had the media release presented against them, now coming back for, I don't even know what the term is legally, but defamation character, or damages, something along those lines?
Use of power.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point, and it comes up in municipal councils all the time. And we just had one in Lower Mainland last week, where one councillor who runs a local newspaper ran, or whatever councillor, this is really beside him, and suing each other for defamation now. It's, it's the same place where one councillor stuck a pencil in the cheek. Jolly good. So, I have to answer your question. If council has a whole council resolution with issue of media release, that simply said that, you know, we, we have an allegation of breach of confidentiality, and we decided to investigate it by having us like committee of council or whatever, that would protect each individual council member and all of the municipality from an action for defamation from the councillor. I say the councillor is councillor Jane Doe. Jane Doe sees a media release, and alleges that she breached confidentiality, and she comes back with a clearance letter, and a whole battery of orders that she gave, and she says, there was never any breach of confidentiality, it never happened, but there is a media release hanging out there. Could she sue you for defamation? She could sue you, but you're not under defense as one, it's called qualified privilege, and every elected official in the municipal council is protected by qualified privilege. If they're sued for defamation, unless the plaintiff can prove that there was malice or theft, in other words, that it was done maliciously. Of course, this would not be done maliciously, it would be done on the basis of a council majority vote, on the basis of merits. The second defense is called fair comment, and fair comment is the one where, the leading case in Canada, there's a cartoon with Philip Andrews, and that's the Minister of Social Welfare pulling the wings off. Why? Because it features the comment space, in the context of reducing welfare rates to $300 for people who are single, welfare recipients, and he thought that was discriminatory, and the Court of Appeals said it was not, because people in public life, as soon as you run for office, whether you're elected or not, you're subjected to public ridicule, ridicule, and swearing, all the cruel things that go with being elected official.
Actually, a lot, that's really complicated. Defense of work.
Defense of fair comment. Fair comment. And there are other defenses as well, but I don't need to take your time up on all of that. My short answer is, I don't think there'd be a defamation if you're there, unless there was evidence of malice, like if, if four of the seven of you were threatening with malice, and were using that to try and skewer one of the council members, you'd lose the privilege.
Counselor Hane?
Just, sorry, just a couple of things. In, in the purpose here, it speaks that each council member should be afforded the right procedural fairness.
Where, number one?
Number one, so, one, you know, how do we ensure a councillor gets procedural fairness if there's a bit of a witch hunt after them? Can you say a majority of council can overrule, like, and it's not a vendetta or something? How do, you know?
Keep in mind, that, that's an expression in the purpose, and then throughout the rest of the document, you have the principles, and then you have the actual procedures, so it's the procedures that would lay out the procedural fairness.
No, but I think Counselor Hane has a good question, and that's the whole point of this, I think. Because it's all very well to have a policy that just says, here are all the rules regarding competitive interest, and the rules regarding confidentiality, they're already in statute, they're already in materials. What this is, it's, it's a procedure to make sure that if somebody alleges that you breached, that you're protecting, and there's two things that protect you, one is the case law, there's a whole bunch of cases that have been decided over the years, and they say whether or not you're entitled to procedural fairness, and what the level of procedural fairness would be. You're, you're entitled to the highest level, because you're a democratic elected official, you're, you're subject to public scrutiny, every other, every decision, even procedural building of everything you say. And so, it's very important that you be afforded the highest level of procedural fairness, because of the rights that are affected, the rules that would be affected is whether you're not getting, you get rejected, whether you're disqualified from office, whether you, your vote doesn't count. Those are substantial, critical issues in a free and democratic society, so it's important that you get the highest level of procedural fairness. That's why this document gives you a huge amount of time. Like I, we were just doing with one municipality, it only gave the person two days to prepare. I don't think that's enough. So, in here, you know, we get at least seven business days, physical days, to prepare. The council can't deliberate on the matter until you have time to prepare. You have the right to a lawyer, you have the right to make a submission to council, and you have the right to get and remove this council to hear their comments and questions of you before you have to leave at the point where the board... That's the highest level of procedural fairness. And we even added the highest, highest thing, which the Court of Appeal is saying is, for council, has to give you reasons for the decision. There are a lot of cases where, under procedural fairness, you don't have to give reasons for your decision. For example, the leading case in Stevens, where the hotel in Burnham had its license revoked by the license inspector, and went to appeal to the council, and council upheld that, and voted to ensure that that hotel did not have this assistance. And the grounds were that they had, the hotel was renting on rooms by the hour and not by the night, and also that they had 108 phone calls in one month to the RCMP from the paymen who was in lobby of this place, and they had problems with license inspection, health inspection, policing, and it was costing Burnham pretty too much money. So, the question was, what level of procedural fairness was that motel entitled to? And the Court of Appeal said, they're not entitled to reasons, they're only intending to make a submission to council, and then council can make a decision. But I think you're all entitled to a much higher level, which is, to be very candid, the decision in the Jehovah's Witness case, which, because that's the highest level of rates that you're entitled to, and that means not only making a submission, but also having a lawyer, having these two weeks to prepare, taking as much time as you want to make a submission, and having reasons from council.
Counselor Milne?
Just follow up on that procedural fairness comment. I'm not sure, Donald, but just, just to clarify, that people, perhaps in the gallery, necessarily understand what that is, it's kind of a jumble word for, for other people. Maybe you can explain that?
Yeah, and I'll be honest, it's a jumble bridge around a lot of departments and divisions too.
Yeah.
They had a couple of it. The bottom line is that in a free and democratic society like Canada, under our constitution, if some entity, whether it's a government, local government, provincial government, government agency, is making a decision that affects your rights, you have rights affected, so it might be an application for a visa, or an application for a development permit, or an application for a wire connection, or it might be more serious, higher level, such as your right to drive a taxi, or to have a short bridge license, or even a higher level than that, such as your right to carry on business altogether, or even a higher level than that, which is your right not to be disqualified from office for competitive interest. Those are all rights that are effective, and the courts over the years have built up a body of case law that says very clearly that if you have rights affected, you're entitled to be able to have a certain level of fairness given to you in whatever decision you're made. So, instead of the old rule, which is that the entity that you're knowing that would hold you underwater, and if you drowned, you were innocent, but if you survived, then you got to go to the next stage, which is caught by fire. You learn the death risk, and then we've gone somewhat further than that, I think, nowadays. Although some of, some of the cases, you know, you wonder. So, now, as I describe, and Counselor Hane asked that question, and you clarified it, everybody who wants a business license, or a short bridge license, or taxi license, or development permit, is entitled to a certain degree of fairness, and it's called procedural fairness, and there's an old doctrine of natural justice, which is even more comprehensive. But what it basically just means is that when you have a decision made by a government such as, go back to council, you have the right to be heard, the right to make a submission, and depending on how substantive your right is, you have a degree of fairness that may be higher than other degrees. The highest is, for example, if somebody accuses one of these council members of conflict of interest, then they're entitled to a hearing and a lawyer, and time to prepare, and also reasons for the final decision. Whereas the lowest level would be if somebody tried to help the fairness firm, and they get an opportunity to, to speak before council votes on the matter, and that kind of...
Thank you. Follow up, Counselor Milne?
It just, it's speaking to the, the specific policy, I appreciate that you, that you included principle, the principles that are kind of going to govern the process, with your objectivity and integrity, fairness, confidentiality, certainty, and that one is particularly important, and accountability, and disclosure, I think this is a really big step forward for this council, I think it's important to have the process... to have the process lined out. I think it's fantastic, and, and in fact, beyond what I expected when we sort of started on this project. Fantastic that there's the form letters that kind of get triggered by, by complaint or raising an issue, and there's a clear, clearly delineated process that's going to get followed, so everybody knows what the expectations are, everybody knows what the consequences are, and everybody knows exactly how we're going to deal with it when it comes up. And then my last point, which is a relatively minor one, concerning Counselor Coulson's question about media release, is, I was thinking that in some circumstances, like thinking of Skaten and Prince George, that this was a situation where, you know, you can correct me if I've got facts wrong, a councillor took confidential performance evaluation information about one of their senior staff members, and took it to the local media, and it had been in-camera information, and it ended up in the newspapers. So, it makes sense in that situation, when it's, you know, it's already public, it's going to be plastered all over the place, that at the minimum, the council would want to say, you know, we're, we're looking at this situation, and we're going to be doing an investigation, which I think would be covered by that number three media release. Even, I mean, you don't even necessarily have to put any kind of specifics or any names in there, it just sets out an option that you brought, some kind of possibility for public interface, depending on what the situation is.
Just, just for clarification, maybe I'm remembering the wrong one, but on the Skaten one, was it not a case that he actually wasn't, for want of a better term, found guilty of breaching council confidentiality, but actually breaching the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, you're absolutely right. The, the RCFP started out in 2017, which is confidentiality, and also breach of section 22 of FOI, POP, information, protection, privacy, and also breach of privacy under sections 30 and 36 of the PEP. The prosecutor concluded that the evidence was more appropriately dealt with under protection of privacy, because it wasn't so much an issue of releasing political or democratic stuff that council was working on. Because one of the questions, releasing private information of an individual, and in particular, their evaluations. And the, the whole purpose of the POP legislation is to protect people like that from having that information exposed. And there's a way of this, but, you know, I don't think you get into that right now. But you're right, they could have gone under 2017, and they could have gone under POP as well. But the prosecutors, in my experience, will generally look at where they can have an efficacious process and a result that doesn't waste the court's time. But I think they could have gone under 2017 as well, but if they already could go under the POP, they wouldn't have gone under 2017.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Coulson.
So, just for the, to the, to that specific example, in that case, to me, it was beyond just an allegation of a breach, it was out there. And so, yes, a media solution might be warranted, but that's where, you know, there's the appendix two, where it said, notice and formal resolution, where breach is believed to improve, et cetera, in the appendix two. So, there's, before us, there's two tiers of response here, so in that example, I would say we're quite solid, the tier two.
Counselor Scott?
Just a couple of questions. Under purpose, the second bullet, it does say, though, that keeping the council process confidential to protect the reputation of the member, unless until the process is completed, then council elects to make a council decision public. So, I don't know if that supports the council, the saying that it allows you to release information, but not necessarily of the individual, that, you know, perhaps it's been something that's happened, and they can say, yes, we're investigating this particular issue, but not actually addressing the individual.
Well, maybe on that.
I don't know what the line's going to be on that.
On, on that section three, the Counselor Coulson original question, it makes reference to in keeping of the district's obligations pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Would, would the release of the name of the individual that's raised, created the concern, let's say, would that be a violation of the Freedom of Information?
Yes.
Privacy, sorry.
If, my view is this, that if the council had an allegation of breach of confidentiality, or breach of POP, and it was already out in the media, such as happened in the Skaten case, then there would be no new release.
Yeah.
And the commissioner is already removed, so that would be okay. Or if the council member consented, which, which often happens, because they're not clear, the whisping is already going on, and the community members want to say, we're going to have a hearing on this, and then a hearing on the community's breach of confidentiality. Or if council gets down to section 1D and says, we're not going to take any action. So, they don't want to say that this kind of is finished, done, everybody in the community has been talking about it, we've considered the matter, won't take any more time. That may be a good reason for putting it up. In terms of person, identifying the individual's name, or information that allow people to figure who they are, that can't happen unless it's already in the public, or the person's consent.
Or, or if a decision had been.
Or if the suit has been made, at the final decision, at this stage, rather than my stage two, which is appendix two. Remember that this whole page here, that Counselor Coulson referred to, and as I say, I approve of this concern, it's not, it's not a final decision of council to release a media release, it's a notice to the affected council member, that that council may take that into account when they consider the matter in the future. So, the person who relates to breach of confidentiality has the opportunity to speak to that matter, and convince them that the media logic to release a media release at that point in history. So, it's a notice, this is a notice to the person, not a procedure for council.
Counselor Scott, that is.
Yeah, well, then, the second question that I had was, we talk a lot about the confidentiality side, and I think the bulk of this document tends to address that, but also conflict of interest. And, and I guess, the only thing that it really talks about conflict of interest is in appendix three, essentially, is disqualification. True, I guess.
So, that's, that's allowed within the community charter?
Yeah, but I guess what, where I'm looking at is with a, a policy, one of the challenges, of course, with conflict of interest, is that it can vary, and, you know, it seems some of the court precedents in that, and it's sort of all over the map, and there's some pretty distant, I think the one up in Swamish, with the mayor's son's wife's daughter, the daughter, the two were split up, and, you know, that type of thing, they were getting some pretty remote items there. So, I guess I'd just like a little more clarity on the conflict of interest side of things, and how this applies to that. Obviously, somebody has to come forward with a, a conflict of interest, and I realize there's the two types of conflict of interest. But if, if there's sort of like an allegation, how does it sort of go through the, the process?
Sure. Yeah. Well, the interesting thing is, I, I have done a bunch of, I have conflict of interest policies for other places, and most of them wanted to have a policy that basically repeated, but it's already in the act.
Okay.
So, part one of the policy would be, here's what disqualification means, and here's how to get disqualified, here are the grounds for disqualification, and here's what it means to have your vote not counted, but not be disqualified from office. In other words, you, you stay in the room, you have, you have a prior to personal interest, but not a community interest, so your vote doesn't count, but you're not disqualified. Those are the two kinds. And a policy kind of, in layperson's terms, spells out how it works for disqualification in community interests, and how it works for non-community, or what they call other interests, such as bias apprehensive, bias personal interest, tribal interest. And really, when you read all of that, it's just all in the act already. It's, it's section 100 to 101 of the community charter, and it's not, it's not exactly layperson language, but it's pretty clear, it's like a qualification. And the whole idea of having it there was, in 1995, the UBCM was asked to consider having the legislation taken under the old municipal law, and made the same as, and inside the NLA's Conflict Interest Act, remember, the Soviet Assembly? And UBCM had two problems with that. One was that it was very complicated, and you needed a Philadelphia lawyer to interpret it. And secondly, a lot of that stuff that was conflict of interest for NLA's, wouldn't work in a community, in, in almost anywhere in BC. Because it, anywhere that, only one person in town who has a backhoe, or one person in town who does the charter account, and there's one person in town who is the, has a gravocater, or is a contractor, is a lawyer, or a error. Community has a problem as soon as you have two lawyers, but it's only if everyone's there. But the bottom line is, you have to allow these people to have relationships where they can still run for office and not be discouraged from running for office. Whereas, in NLA's, it's a totally different story. And then, the other aspect of that was that the NLA Act said that the decisions are made by the conflict commissioner down in Victoria, who's a part-time job, is 85 years old, and doesn't have time every Monday when they get 30 or 40 conflict issues arising, to make a decision in time of council meeting, because they usually take a whole month to make a decision. So, UBCM said, let's do our own code, let's make it simple, let's make it the best in Canada, and in order to sell that to the government, we make it the most onerous. So, it has inside, outside influence, and insider information, and integrating the staff, and gifting, all that stuff, it's in there, it's quite onerous, but it's also fairly dear. So, I didn't repeat all of that, because it's, it's all there. But what I did do is try to say, if, if it comes out, an allegation comes out, and there is a little procedure going into this scheme, where first of all, you try and sort it out. Remembering that the whole basis of the conflict legislation in BC and the rest of Canada is that the onus is on you as a council member to decide or find out if you have a conflict of interest, whether it's losing your vote or getting disqualified, the onus is on you. So, nobody can stop you from staying in the room, you know, right? There was a councillor in Sanwich, who was told by a clerk that he had a conflict of interest, and he totally ignored that. And the mayor said, you have a conflict of interest, you better get out, and get disqualified. He ignored that, he said, so they got a legal opinion, which was about 20 pages long, and it said he had a conflict of interest and be disqualified from office, he was probably already disqualified at that point. And he ignored that too, because he went up and got a legal opinion from his real estate advancing lawyer, that he had no conflict of interest. Of course, the real estate advancing lawyer had never, ever seen any municipal law case or any, you know, and with the greatest respect, hadn't taken municipal law case. And said, there's no conflict of interest. So, he said, I've got a legal opinion, so I can stay in. The judge got a hold of the matter, and, and repeated word for word the legal opinion, the law, the legal opinion, that said that he had a conflict of interest, and that he ignored the advice of staff, ignored the advice of a lawyer, that he got foolishly went up and got advice from somebody who didn't know what they're talking about, and that he was disqualified from office. So, our procedure that we've set into here, is that the first thing that we do, unless the mayor is the one who's accused, the mayor has the responsibility of trying to sort it out behind the scenes, by convincing the council member that you really have a conflict of interest, so it'd be in your best interest to leave. The reason we're concerned, as treaty as clerk and, and you as mayor, is it could also affect the validity of the final law resolution that comes up. So, we're very concerned, we don't want to just allow a person to stay in the room and sort of control the matter. So, the obligation is on the mayor, and that falls into the community charter in due to reason, to try and convince the council member that there really is a conflict, and you really should be in the room, and you should get an independent legal advice, if you don't want to get disqualified from office. And this could become a major political thing, for two reasons. One, if the way the votes are going in council are 4-3 all the time, you might have it either 3-3 or some other way. You keep watching for conflict for somebody, and it's less of an issue. Other one is that, that there's a 4-3 vote, or a 3-2 vote, or a tie vote on council, and somebody in the community doesn't like the result, they can simply go to court and say, well, that one of those council members who was in the majority, or who would, you know, cause the decision to get disqualified, had a conflict, and therefore the vote didn't count, and therefore, that resolution and that bylaw is invalid, and, you know, that's a lot more effective than standing up fully and making a submission, because they get their way by way of court voter. So, that's why it's important that the mayor, very first, in agenda of this policy, to try and convince the person to either acknowledge that they have a conflict, or can deal with it, or get an independent legal opinion. It also allows the corporation, because of the concern about the validity of the resolution of bylaw, to get an independent, to get a legal opinion stressed out. And usually, that's a phone call on Mondays before the meeting, which is, you know, 10 minutes. But most of the municipal law firms have one or two people who are fairly expert on conflict of interest, and can answer those frankly, and have the right answer in time for the meeting. And then, that, at that point, you've got a legal opinion, and the courts will say, very clearly, the main court decision's saying that if a council member ignores the legal opinion, say they're in conflict of interest, that's private case of evidence that they're in bad faith, and there is the protection of the exceptions under that part of the community charter, the listed exceptions. They're no longer acting as good faith. If the opinion says they want to have a conflict of interest, then that opens the door.
But if, if they, in good faith, have accidentally, if you want to call it that, voted on something, but the courts typically not disqualify, recognizing situation to situation.
Yeah, if it's inadvertent in good faith, then that's, that's an exception. Another exception is, if it's already holding significant, another exception, if it's in common with the, all the other residents, and if you're voting on a property value tax by law, you know, for, for residences, that affects everybody in the community, so you've got an exception there as well. The main one is, if it's inadvertent in good faith, but the courts look at that really closely, and if there's been a legal opinion, who knows then?
I guess the, the thing I was looking at is, is, we voted on something tonight, and then a member of the public took exception to that, and they figured that there was a, a conflict of interest. They bring that forward, I think, they bring it forward to, say, the district first, so what happens then? That's what I don't think the process, it sort of happens. I, I realize that it's up to us to determine if we are in conflict of interest, and to excuse ourselves from meeting. But, say, we did think we were in conflict of interest like that, when in Swamish, whoever was giving the example, that's, you know, very remote, you know, didn't even enter the person's mind that there was any potential conflict, and then somebody complains about it, what, what happens in the process, I guess?
Sure. Well, if somebody complains, there are sort of two trajectories. One is, you, you, as a council, hear about the complaint, so you deal with it under this policy, the mayor talks to staff, if necessary, with a legal opinion, deals with you, and talks to you, but whether or not you really have a legal opinion, whether it's an issue, and try and sort it out at the very beginning. The other one is, the public having the opportunity in the end of the legislation to deal with it, the vote comes, and that, so that has no bearing on where council meetings are, or the creations. It's an independent legal process that allows the public, you know, ten or more electors to petition the court, and, you know, they, it's sometimes daunting for them, because they have to pay legal fees, and they also have to pay costs if they lose. And that, nowadays, the costs are higher than they used to be. That's why they hope that matter will be dealt by council, and when council deals with it, it's a resolution of council to refer the matter to the BC Supreme Court for a disqualification decision, but it requires procedural fairness. And just on the, of the, like, the different.
And just on the, of the electric district court, believe when you're here, our first session, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars on average to challenge a bylaw or resolution, I think you mentioned?
It depends on three factors. You're right.
That seems to be what the aggregate now is. Financial for the layer three.
It is a financial realty. And that's why the act, you know, the UBCM wanted the act to be as clear as possible so that councillors could make an election before they actually jumped into the fire. But yeah, not only that, but the twenty-five thousand dollars, and then if it's appealed, and then that's another thirty-five or forty thousand dollars. Because quite often, if a council member is in that kind of scenario, they'll appeal and exhaust the remedies. And then there's costs that can go away against the rules as well. And sometimes, it appears that the ten people don't have a lot of resources, the court will ask them to put up security costs through the meeting. Those kind of things also are daunting for people who are, you know, not used to the legal process and not used to the law. But then again, council has the power to refer it to the Supreme Court by a majority of its decision. And that's where the procedural fairness comes in too.
When we're in a case that's not pecuniary, why? Because then you're not looking at the application clause.
Yeah, I think that even if it's non-pecuniary, this policy covers it as well, because that's one where your vote definitely doesn't count. You're not disqualified from office, but your vote may not count. So let's say you have a big resulting issue coming up, it's very controversial, and it's, everybody knows it's going to be four-three. If somebody accuses you of having your mind closed, of being biased, of having an apprehension applied, having a private interest, a personal interest, like Minister Robert Blenko in the Calais-Sabah case, where the developer was actually his campaign client, I believe, to the best of my knowledge, who was his campaign finance director and agent, and also a friend who had gone on vacation with a few families, also had barbecues together, those companies. I believe those are the facts. And so that was not a pecuniary, it was a private or personal interest according to the commissioner on conflict of interest. So if you have a situation like that, where it's your agent or campaign finance, or it's your client or a patient, or your subcontractor, you have another relationship like that, it's not pecuniary, where your mind is already made up. Those are all situations where your vote may not count. And if it's a quasi-judicial matter, which simply means that you're making a decision over an individual or a property that plays a practical pressure, an open, very disparate for one person's, your vote might taint all the votes. So in most cases, only your vote does count. But in certain circumstances, the courts will hold, if your vote is bad, it's like a bad apple in an apple barrel, and it's a choice in all the votes as well. So that's why it's very critical for the mayor and staff that those issues get sorted out before the decision is made. In my experience, in BC, councillors are almost always ready, willing, and able to do their thing to get rid of the conflict.
Counsel from council? Counselor move it.
Can you tell us, are these kind of policies, are they relative or common in other municipalities? Or are we breaking the boundary?
You would be the first municipality by all that would actually have a formal council policy during the quality of issues. We've had similar procedures that have been invoked in regard to specific instances, in particular municipalities, you know, where they've gone enough and said, council's going to consider sanctioning someone. They had one in Thompson, in Caribou Regional District, I think it's a case called Byronett versus Caribou. And in that case, they were going to have a motion to sanction in regard to breach of confidentiality. And they didn't give director, if they didn't afford any procedural fairness. And so the judge threw it out and said that they acted improperly and awarded costs against the guilty parties.
But what about, what about conflict of interest?
So in conflict of interest, yeah, in the famous, that mayor of Nelly, Rick Ream, scenario, he had all of these procedural fairness polls written down, passed by council, and followed by council. But no, you'd be the first place to have an actual formal policy in place of the potential future of your entreaties.
I've got a couple of questions just regards to the policy itself. On page four of our agenda, there's a list of steps. It comes one-third or quarter of the way down, if the breach is alleged to have occurred. The first bullet, more prominent of that one, relates to how it works. The second bullet, attempt to resolve the matter without proceeding to the steps in section seven. What, what type of attempt to resolve the matter? So at that point there, there's, there's been an allege, somebody's alleging something, so there could be some documents or something of that nature. How, how would the expectation of that be resolved?
That's a really good question. It always depends on circumstances of the case. If it's a case where someone has said, I have made up my mind, I don't care what anybody says, we've already had twelve nights of other periods of municipal law, I'm dead against it, I ran against it, my camp was in my brochures during my election, I'm against it, I've gone on Shaw TV and paid for the, I don't care what anybody says for those three nights of periods, my mind is made up. Your duty as mayor at that point is to take that person aside and say, you have to swear an affidavit that your mind is open to crack, or your mind is a crack. For that, that's an example of bias. That actually happened. That's a, that's a true story that happened in Richmond in the case called, say, Richmond Firm and First Street. But that's bias. You could also have a similar situation with apprehension bias. You have a similar situation with an allegation that a member of council has a pecuniary interest. So the idea is you try and convince them through your good involvement, your reputation as a past mayor, current mayor, doing the right thing, to say, look, you're causing a problem for the corporation, for the council, for the authority, and for yourself, and you may find yourself disqualified and you're disqualified from the bylaw.
Now, what those examples sound to me, the case like it's before the breach has occurred, or before the alleged breach has occurred.
It could be after the allegation has come out. Like you could have, like councillor Moby in the Richmond case went on TV and he said, I have my mind out, and I'm, I'm going to vote this way, and after everybody else is. But then after that, the mayor convinces him to swear an affidavit saying that he was unmetable through persuasion and his mind was open to crack.
But he hadn't voted on it yet.
They hadn't, they voted on it first in the second meeting, he voted.
But in terms of made that statement, did he vote on it after that?
Yeah, he did. But after he swore an affidavit saying that his mind was open to crack.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's where I'm kind of struggling here, because for using that as an example, if he makes that statement on TV, then he votes on it, no affidavit, then he votes on it. In that case, there, there is an alleged breach at that point. And in that second section there, says that the breach has alleged to have occurred, that's a scenario. Statement, vote, now after the fact. The second bullet says attempt to resolve the matter without proceeding to those steps.
Yeah, so if he's made a statement on Shaw TV, and then the vote is going to take place after that, he has, up to that point, almost stepped into the steps.
But he hasn't breached his own vote.
If you convince him to swear the affidavit, then he's free to stay in the room and vote. Or if you can't convince him, then you got to convince him to get back in the room and not vote on that.
Yeah, but I, maybe I'm not quite given.
Maybe you have that in.
Well, it's, but it's a, it's a tiny thing, top part of page four agenda. The breach hasn't occurred, so the vote hasn't occurred, there's a concern that it's about to occur, so the vote has come out, you know, council, mayor, corporate officer, whoever is, is concerned, that first action appears to deal with the pre-vote scenario. The post-vote scenario, the breach is alleged to have, if the breach is alleged to have occurred, so it's past tense, now the corporate officer goes through the procedure, puts it on the closed meeting agenda, and then there's that next bullet says attempt to resolve the matter, so the breach has occurred.
So you're right, I was wrong, I wasn't, you're absolutely right. I think at that point, there are a number of options that you let as a mayor, let his staff take. For example, to have the matter returned for reconsideration in section one thirty-one, and have the council member let it in the room at that point, and then vote on the matter. That's one of them. The council can matter for reconsideration now with the chief of law, which has a bunch of steps exactly to get that done, and then regroup the matter with the council member in the room. Or to fix the alleged breach, and get, maybe get a second legal opinion if there was no conflict. These are the kind of options that are available too. Because there is a section that says you have a second legal opinion that there is no breach, you can come back in the room or it's not a statement.
Okay. Now, separating between conflict of interest and confidentiality side of things, because I believe this applies to both of those possibilities, based on the preamble of it. Would attempt to resolve the matter without proceeding, recognizing these are just allegations brought forward by an individual? Could part of that process involve council discussing that? Because they've kind of heard one side, but they haven't heard another side.
That's true. But you got to be careful to that council member who needs action, they need, and rather than having a witch hunt on basis of investigation. So, and I think that this is something that all of us are concerned about, you know, where one councillor made an allegation, throws the mother to the wall, and then, let's discuss it in the next council meeting, but then there's no procedural fairness. So either you, you know, you're a little bit, all the way, by lines, might be, if you're going to throw that kind of serious allegation at someone in a council setting, when there's a downtown public, then you need to have the full and complete protections under procedural fairness.
Which, which raises another item that I've got marked here. There's the, it almost seems to occur in the first part, the second part, maybe I missed it. If deemed appropriate, encourage the member to seek independent legal opinion. There's, there's costs related to that, so using your handle, throwing your money, individual throws money, council starts down this road. In terms of protection of the individual, they need seeking independent legal advice, but the cost is actually.
Yes, there are, and that's, that's one of the things, you know, as we, as we teach in the English Academy, a lot of things that you don't know when you're in for office. One of them is that all of a sudden, you might end up having to pay with your own pocket for independent legal advice. There are identification provisions in the local government act that apply in some circumstances. But that's why almost every municipality we deal with says that we'll provide a legal opinion, and it'll be solid, and we'll make it available to the affected council members to decide if they want it. Now, maybe once a year, we get a situation where one or more councillors say, we don't agree with that legal opinion, and so they make independent legal opinion. The advantage of independent legal opinion is probably a thousand bucks. You know, if our councillor, they go find a popper and prevent a lawyer that will do a formal, probably about a thousand bucks. The advantage of that is that under the act, if it says that they're allowed to stay in the room and, and if it's a real honor by the municipal lawyer, then they can rely on that. If somebody alleges that later on, that they have a conflict, they can simply use that exception and say that it's a good thing.
Okay. Well, I think it's last that I had, just, there's a, there's a number of times in here, and I recognize that part of it's a letter and then a resolution applying to things, et cetera. It makes reference to, and I realize this is up to council to kind of decide, in regard to any council decisions, we will provide you with, and it says oral reasons for our decision, is there any reason why a council shouldn't provide written reasons? Because interpretation on what's said orally versus what's written can quite often be very loose.
Yeah, you're right. I think the advantage of oral is that it's right away. The thing about written is that staff have to get consensus of council as to what the reasons are, have to get them recorded, maybe not the middle lawyer, and release them later on, that probably takes a week or so. There's the age-old problem of there being seven different reasons, you know, because I don't know of any council where everybody is of the same mentality all the time, except the Prohibition, which we have in the event. So then in this council, I think we're, I think we have an enriched situation where they have quite a diversity of opinion, and that's a Canadian one. For the next four years, that's amazing. So you should have oral reasons, which are quite obvious, you know, we determined your breach because we have evidence that you published this in the IMO request, and that you agreed, you admitted to it, and it's obvious. On the other hand, you may want to give reasons, because staff are, they say, give reasons, that's one thing.
Okay. Any questions from council? With regard to this, there is a draft policy here, it was originally put on the agenda for discussion, I have any desire to move it forward, recognizing it's a critical nature at a timeframe necessarily, but council, council move it.
I'm happy to make the motion to implement the policy as presented.
Sorry, implement as presented? Okay, we're seconded there. I'll second it, it's good. I hope you told them very quick, start. Never said, said, do something for discussion, but it has been seconded for discussion. Discuss. Counselor, hand.
Given the information we've received tonight, I'd like to have the time to review this again and bring it back, such as your comment about, you know, talks about oral comments, if only written comments, any of these, maybe to have a chance to read and just reflect on some of the things that have been said until we have, tighten it up a little bit.
Okay. Further discussion, counsel move it.
If it's, if people want more time to look at it, I have to make a motion table until I have to.
Okay, more potato, somebody, councillor Savage, all those in favor? Motion carries. Okay. When is our next regular meeting?
Twenty-third, Monday, next week.
Okay. All right. Next item, Fiddle's covenant and minimum understanding, which was discussed, a live discussion last night at the meeting, which proposed it, it's a direction driven to stop in that regard, and further on a specific item? Okay, carrying on, we've been able to, oh, sorry, councillor Scott.
Just a question to move on on this. The district had done this MOU with Fiddle, and the development of PDA started, like you, you said, councillors continue to develop, members are changing because of elections and stuff like that, so everything keeps moving. Councils elected at this point in time to put anything further with the phase development agreement on hold, is there, is there any liability to the district in that regard?
No, no, quite clearly, there is no liability to the, there is no PDA, there is no phase development agreement. There is a draft that you worked on, yeah, help and stuff, and it is just a proposal. It's no more than if somebody applies for first reading for bylaw, or asks to, to agreement, maybe to extend service to the street or something like that, there's no liability for either putting it on hold or stocking it all together. And you are bound by the company, sorry, yes. Yes.
Counselor Savage?
Yeah, I wonder whether we could ask a lawyer to, as a bridge of public, particularly in our way, reflexionation of phase development agreement, what that really is.
A phase development agreement is a unique thing in that in British Columbia, you don't have it in other provinces. We used to have land use contracts that allowed a developer or a property to enter into a contract with the municipality to agree with each other that there would be certain works and services. There would be certain amenities, there's certain timelines for phase development. And the municipality would get this, the developer would get that. And they were canceled in, on January seventeenth, nineteen seventy-nine, the last land use contract. A lot of people missed those. A lot of developers missed them. A lot of municipalities missed them because of the ability to negotiate deals within the land use contract. Because you're not allowed to sell as long, like you can't have a developer come in and say, well. You know, if you adopt this, so many that gives us these cabin houses. We'll give you a million bucks or give you places, a car plan. We'll give you five seasons, affordable units, whatever. You can't just have something. So the legislature had to figure out a way in modern times to allow developer and municipal council or regional board to come to a deal under which the developer would provide amenities or cash and lieu or special works and services that are over and above, that are in your subdivision. And to do that, this notion of a phase development agreement came up. And what it says, it's in the act, it's in the Development Act, in section nine oh five point one. And what it says is that it's an agreement, but it has to be done by bylaw. So you need three readings and adoption. You need to have public notice, the same as a agreement by law. And you also need to have the opportunity for people to make submissions and be heard in regard to the subject matter of the phase development agreement. It's a very, very open process with a hearing and notice, and I mean, it's not just a kind of secret. You know, like they have in Dallas or Houston. So this, this is already in Vancouver, the Grand Hill case, which is being opened. So with this phase development agreement, it's a two-sided affair. For the benefit of the municipality, it allows you to have clear requirement on the part of the developer to provide amenities. Amenities are things like parks, trails, landscaping, parterels, fire halls, reservoirs, land, larger open space, commons, seniors housing, portable housing, accessible housing, library, museum, art gallery, public art, all those kinds of things. In return for what the community releases fair in terms of density and use of that site. And they call, you know, when you get the rezoning, they call it giving a lift. You're lifting the height of the property from single family or townhouse to multifamily or multifamily, depending on the nature of the zoning model. In return for that lift, in the United States and most of Canada, a municipality will take catch. So in Vancouver, you apply for rezoning. The city of Vancouver is looking for seven, what, seventy-five or eighty percent of the value of the increase of the rezoning. That's so regular and so predictable that developers are used to it and they pass it on to the consumers. In other communities, they don't have community amenity contributions. In my view of the act is that the only way you can have cash and lieu is if you have and this is unbroken, recorded, council, Colson's machine. Legal opinion is now okay. But if a municipality has to express, identify amenities in the PDA and then provide how the developer may provide cash and lieu of those amenities. And those are commonly referred to as community amenity contributions. And those, those monies are provided. And then the municipality puts in a reserve fund and uses it for parkland or open space or trails or public art or whatever. And that's, that process is fine. Also, in the PDA, municipalities can require a developer to put unique or special servicing requirements. So if you have an area where you want to have two extra reservoirs, those can be required. If you want to have a different kind of fire protection or special fire detection because of issues, historical issues or such, that can be required. If you want to have a different course for fire protection, or if you want to have wells that have, maybe the file says thirty gallons, but you want to have forty gallons for that area, then you do that in the PDA as well. Those are works and services and amenities. You can also require special circumstances, such as you have to provide the park first before you get any development rights. Or you have to build an entrance railway and also another access railway for fire protection or a three-way, you know, so that outfire, you can clear the side of the property, those kinds of things. In return, once the developer get, they get one thing, and that is protection from down zoning for up to ten years. And that arises because, it's been quoted in Canada, a lot of the city of Victoria in a case that I was advising the city on, to downzone property in Victoria Harbour from two towers, condos, to just a couple of stories in a small arena. And the developer was not happy with that because the developer had already borrowed over a million dollars worth of amenities and then got downzoned. So the provinces decided, by the matter of policy, that in a PDA, if the municipality is going to get amenities, then they have to, in return, give the developer up to ten years of protection from downzoning. That can be increased beyond ten years, up to twenty years, with the approval of the inspector of municipal. That's a, I don't know if that's generic, right?
If I may just have a follow. Don't I have a familiar with the phase strata agreements? This is almost an extension of that, of feedbacking on that principle thing whereby on a phase strata, you know, there may be no provision in the first phase for a clubhouse set. So the phase development agreement would indicate to the purchasers of the first phase that in the next phase, there will be a community building or whatever.
Yeah.
So.
And security for that.
And security for that, yeah. So the phase development agreement for non-strata is sort of an extension of that and it's typically used for larger projects, am I correct?
Absolutely. And, you know, communities have run into problems in the past, for example, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, the economy took a downturn where they had what I call, we mentioned, gifting agreements. Where they think, okay, we'll give you rezoning, we'll give you five hundred thousand dollars or we'll give you this extra piece of land or we'll give you a fire hall or we'll give you a clubhouse. And then, you know, there's CC double A or bankruptcy or insolvency and the municipality never gets any. This way, you've got, the municipality knows when that's entered into the deal. But if it's giving all that zoning, then at these stages of the phase agreement with security, it's going to get these amenities. And I'm not in favor or against a PDA that's proposed with respect to LFP and the Fliddles Estates. I'm, I'm your servant to do whatever you want.
Excellent. Colson, just sort of comment on the term of downzoning. I think it was in LGLA a couple of weeks ago, there was a legal session. I believe the presenter said that there's only one or two cases in BC so far where they've actually approved the twenty-year term. Something like that. Yeah. Was it seven? Okay. I remember thinking it was a small number based on, I think one of them is Varhams. It is.
Just with regards to the zoning though, until such time as that agreement is in place, it's up to council's discretion with regards to what zoning is. Basically, we have the ability to downzone up to that point, correct?
That's right. Until the phase development agreement receives third reading and adoption on the bylaw and is signed by a mayor and corporate officer and has the registration in the title office. Right up to that very point, council can change the zoning, upzone, downzone, side zone. The leading case is McOneville Dell versus Galley Island Trust Committee, which was followed in CMA C versus West Vancouver. In both of those cases, the court said, council's in charge of zoning. As long as you have a public hearing and in some cases, procedural fairness, like it's a church, for example, and your other businesses. As long as you have a public hearing and lots of notices and all the procedures that are required by the act. And as long as there is a practical and economic use that is still left in the zoning and you're not downzoning them for a public purpose, then you can downzone the Spring Break Canada, it's out of that, and the West Vancouver Chiefs as well. But back home is the D C phase.
So unless it's encompassed within the PDA itself, let's say amenities are offered by a property owner. There's, it doesn't create a guarantee of zoning unless that is detailed out in some form or degree.
Exactly.
So they wanted to give us, I don't know, a trail, let's say, for whatever reason. Unless it's encompassed in the agreement, that does not bind us to holding zoning for any period of time.
That's right. And, you know, the old days, up until very recently, most municipalities said, we, we as staff will not recommend your rezoning unless you provide an extra lane and generalization and after consolidation, plus offering of landscaping, plus giving us another seven percent of, you know, that kind of stuff. And a gazebo. And the, there's nothing in writing. Give the adoption of the zoning by law and there's no trigger or requirement for the developer to come through. So a lot of municipalities then would get all of those amenities after the reading in a covenant and then downzoning. And that process has been questioned by the courts. I think the only two ways that you should do amenities are a phase development agreement or section nine oh for amended zoning by law. Amended zoning by law is not really effective for deep development. It's good for a one operate.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. Any further from counsel with regards to the Fliddles covenant and that MOU? Next item on the agenda, Lance, with the NIBL water agreement. And just kind of restating what I mentioned before, the aspect of consideration of things like operation plan and policy as opposed to legal interpretations necessary. I also recognize that with regards to policy direction, for example, that is something quite often determined by council and recognizing the control of council, we may rely somewhat on continuing council members for some possible information and or stat in that regard. So if you've got questions in relation to any of these challenges in getting responses necessary. Okay. I'm kind of sorry, I just, it's getting hot. Hi Fred. Within the agreement itself, it speaks to supplying water to the winds area. Operationally, what does it take to get water there?
Operationally, actually, it's, you would have to replace the water line from the altar reservoir or twin it, twin it there. From the reservoir right up to the winds area, basically ordered by an upper code. It would have to be a minimum of ten inch. Right now, it's only eight inch down to horse turn.
Just for the law.
Yes. So, yeah, we'd have to actually put a six inch in to twin the one that's existing or go with a ten inch from up there all the way to the winds area.
What about the actual getting the water up there? Is there pumps needed or it can just work its way up there based on elevations?
Yeah.
Would it be able to go all the way up like Lorenz and Leam, that's where that's at?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And question regarding the number in the agreement. And this isn't necessarily directed at Fred. The agreement makes reference to two hundred and eleven premises. My quick count on lots and on north wind, south wind, is a number less than that. Is there a specific area that it relates?
The number is less. We had, we had discussions with the NIBL before they publicized the agreement. We could have clarified the actual property numbers. We were just going by a generalization of the number of properties there. But when you do an actual count, I think it's a hundred and thirty-one in the area.
Five hundred and forty.
Something like that. Yeah.
So I'm kind of curious, two hundred and eleven is not quite kind of a, if I'm going to grab the number of the air, I'm grabbing two hundred. Do you have any of the two I mentioned?
No, like I say, just a number of quick looking at it estimate that that was, that was there. And when we actually do the count, it was that.
Yeah. Okay, probably a number from the engineer said that. Two hundred and fifty.
Hundred and five papers I did written there in nineteen eighty. So basically, the number came from somebody that had a bigger.
Just looking at Schedule A on the back of the agreement, the shady area. It looks as though it's just out when melting.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I counted them because I was thinking there was less properties, but the number was two eleven. So I was looking at kind of, is there a separate boundary I should be looking at? It's just that shady area.
You would know on Schedule A that it's actually been shown handwritten, the number of connections. As I say, if you had that conversation with the city, it would have not been a handwritten map that was associated with the actual agreement and you would have given them the accurate count.
But I, I thought the two twenty-five was in relation to the Winchester area.
Oh, sorry. Yes, sorry.
Okay.
But it wouldn't have been a handwritten map. Basically, what I'm saying would have provided that in a more formal basis.
Okay. Additional questions, Counselor Colson?
Just on your earlier question about the water line up to the winds area. So that, would that be a capital or an operating expenditure if that was to happen? That would be a capital.
That could also be provided by developer. You notice the G property developed, they wanted water, they could provide that water at that cost.
And it would have been something that was identified, council only had said, would be established by the period of service.
Yeah.
For taking that up to the one that's up there.
And of course, if, you know, if a developer wanted to develop the G property and install the water line, then the cost of the winds area would be significantly less.
Correct me, it's been a while since I thought about what service areas. It's fifty percent of the properties with fifty percent of the assessed value.
The coverage from the two.
So if, so if it was a situation, for example, the pipe was, as Fred mentioned, running along there. And we ran into this, I think, or some of the discussion from the sewer, trying to define that area in some cases with consideration of what will be successful versus what won't be successful. So for example, if, let's say, just the G property didn't want to participate. Okay, that's one, I guess it's four lots, four or five parcels in there. Probably just represent, it's fifty percent of the assessed value of land and buildings, correct? Not just land.
I don't recall the exact terminology in the legislation. It's a combination of fifty percent and I know assessment plate holds it.
Yeah.
But I, I think it is the overall total assessment of property.
And the only reason for me mentioning that is, is that if the developer was included as part of the service area, they would get a vote for them, better way to say it. If you bring the numbers down, because if there's a challenge to the success of the vote, then you exclude them, but then that pushes the numbers way up again. Okay. Counselor Savage?
Yeah, just another question, sort of three, it's a staff, just six periods, six of the agreement infras connection to the entire community in the future. So the first phase being a couple of lands. So the first phase being up to Lansville, and then on six periods, six talks about when the NAMO has adequate excess capacity, then that will be, can be provided to Lansville. Has there been any indication from NAMO yet, whether they have any excess capacity? Do we know that?
Yeah.
I know there's been some media stuff about them, you know, needing to sell, deliver more work, which is kind of interesting. So I think that's important to know, that the community, you know, the agreement just provides for full service to Lansville.
Councilor here?
So just so I'm clear on this reading, 6.6, it says that, going further in that paragraph, it refers to, what was that?
Keep in mind, real interpretations, be very careful.
Okay, I'm just trying to relate, basically in there, it refers to 6.7 about the new connections can go for development, and then development is defined in 6.7 group. So in my mind, I don't understand how that becomes available for the whole community if we're saying it's only for new development, for new connections.
I think with that 6.6, there's two parts to that. It talks about water into lower Lansville, plus 50 additional connections per year.
As a result of?
Forty. Yes. But the body of it, I believe, and maybe clarification, talks about ultimately supplying to the entire community. Is that my understanding?
Yes. But that's hinged on the NAMO can release him to that.
Exactly.
Councilor Scott?
Just a question on, a cover question, but the first one, construction of the main extension, 11.0. And it talks about Lansville, that Lansville's still a cost design, construction, so all the places necessary, the water main. And then we get to 11.5, it says, NAMO agrees to cooperate with faith Lansville's secure design for the water main, which will cost effective means standards, but engineering practice, in regard to the fact that the water main project, our water systems, and to manage the water main project, and to manage consistently for this management of similar projects in NAMO. So I guess I'm a little confused, because is Lansville paying for everything and the NAMO overseeing the construction of it? Because it says NAMO is providing the management of it. Anyway.
Yeah, Donald's one.
The deal that the NAMO agreed to was that we're in charge of securing engineering design and construction, and municipality case for the portion within our boundaries. But the NAMO agrees to cooperate and not be unreasonable. In other words, we had a case between two municipalities where one of them wanted sewer service from one to the other. One of them wanted to have gold plated, works in service in infrastructure, to a standard that's higher than the normal municipality. And that was not fair, it wasn't a good thing, and it would cost a lot more. So this allows us to have the same sort of standard for the iron pellet pipe and the size of the pipe, and the backfill, and the pumping, and so the.
Yeah.
I understand that, but the little question I have was that it says to manage the water main project. That was the area I was.
No, my reading of 11.5 basically gets, the NAMO agrees to cooperate in good faith with Lansville. And then you get down to 11.7, we will cause the main to be constructed, installed, commissioned, et cetera. So effectively, as we're commissioning, installing, et cetera, that main and the connection from the NAMO itself, we are going to need to interact with the NAMO as regards to facilitating connections, materials, those sorts of aspects. And it's just kind of pushing, putting on to the NAMO that our expectation is, is that they will assist us as they would any project within their boundaries. We're still caring about the project, but they're not going to get in the way effectively beyond what they would normally do with the local policies.
Yes, and Mr. Vera, that doesn't mean that they're going to manage the whole project.
No.
It means that they're acting in good faith through addition to the design and the construction and our management of it.
Okay. Now, that's kind of going again, what, getting into interpretation in as opposed to policy, et cetera. Councilor Scott?
I would think that, sorry, thank you, that 11.5, the city of the NAMO have their own construction standards, specifications. Lansville don't have those specifications, we have a different standard of master municipal spec. And so that's probably why that sort of neutral language was put in there, of good engineering practice.
That's my question. Okay, Councilor Scott?
Question through to staff regarding the Winds area, and we talked about the water line going up to there, and then there's reservoir, and obviously, we need larger reservoir capacity. Two questions is, do we need to have a reservoir at a higher elevation? I realize you sort of answered that, say, yes, we can provide water over there by gravity, but the existing reservoir has some gravity challenges in the Wind Chelsea area. And secondly, what size are we looking at for the capacity just quite against both the, I don't know if you can answer this or not, the Wind Chelsea area and the Winds area?
Okay, well, first off, fire flows with the existing reservoir that's there, fire flows will be met, rate to north wind. Above and beyond that, not so much. But the new reservoir will be going higher, just for the sake of the upper zone anyway. The second part of your question, basically what we're getting in this wellfield study and the update on the core stuff, will include what is necessary for the Winds area, right? So they take that into account in their blueprint and fire flows, underestimate in the sizing of the reservoir that we was playing up here. They'll literally give us options. You know, if we include the Winds area, this is a site, even if we don't, this is a site.
Thank you. Councilor Moby, Councilor Colson?
Fred, can you talk a little bit about, if you can, the logistics of putting water in the downtown port, and what needs to happen in order to make that a possibility?
Putting in water in the downtown?
Yeah, so if we hook up to the Wind, as I understand it, if we hook up to the Wind Chelsea and free up those units, and we can transfer those, potentially transfer those free units downtown on the community system?
Yeah, it is potential. I mean, we are looking at getting our standards looked at, basically, so there might be some connections freed up from that. How many, we don't know yet, and that's another thing that'll come out of the study as well. So, but over the last 10 years, we've seen a huge decrease in the amount of water used. So I would suspect there's quite a few that you can actually take from the upper zone and put down in the lower zone to accommodate some, you know, good connections in the lower zone.
So you mentioned the word standards there, so based on the report that we got a couple meetings ago, there was confirmation of a certain quantity of water to be produced. And what I mentioned, at the time, isn't divided by our existing standards, it came up to approximately 710 units of water in that respect. So if the 225 was freed up with our existing standards, effectively, a chunk of that would go to bring us in compliance with our existing standards. Just based on my quick calculations, it would be about 42 units of water left over, unless we address the standards.
That is correct, and like I mentioned earlier, over the past 10 years, we've got really good data in identifying our maximum day use. Yes, the standards are comparable, and I think should stay in place for single well properties, but if you're connected to a municipal system, then there's all kinds of redundancies built into that system. So there might be, there's room, I think, professionally, I think there's room for our standards to probably drop a bit. I'm not saying how much, I'm not sure, that'll be up to the engineers.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Colson?
How much of the water line will go into the NAMO boundary, or go into the?
It's actually, the, up by Shook Road is very tight end, and that is right on the bridge that, they brought it right to the edge for this cleanup there specifically.
Oh, okay, and that's, that's the proposed guidance detailed on that. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilor here?
In the agreement, we've identified the Winds as the beneficiaries of the water agreement. Do we have any stats on, you know, is there a water issue? Did the residents in the Winds want, because I know it'll go to the local service area, but there's a lot of front end costs, again, before we know if it's something that's really wanted up there, or there's a real need. And do we have stats for any other area in the community on water issues?
With the exception of a few people that have come forward and spoken to council directly, indicating that they have issues with their wells and flint and salt area. And I believe Fred is aware of a lot of problems in that area that have problematic wells, haven't found out specifically, and solicited feedback on a purely UI basis, who's having issues with wells? No. But other than we do have records in the UI, you know, I've taken phone calls from individuals that have indicated they have challenges with their well, either quality or quantity.
So just kind of related to that, is recognizing how we, for example, went about justifying phase one, phase two, and phase three, and the sewer side of things, is it a possibility that what we could do is acquire that sort of data, and if we could identify a larger issue within an area, that it might potentially be grant eligible?
We, for phase one, two, and three sewer, we did, back in 2005, set up a survey for people to complete expressing their issues with their water disposal system. I'm sure in council direction, we could do something very similar to those individuals that are on the well system.
I think we also had not just the survey, but I believe there were a couple periods of ditch readings.
That's true.
Done, that we could call from.
That's correct. Just following up on that, I think that would be a really good exercise for council, because during the election, it was really identified, there's a number of areas in the community that are struggling with water. There's a Blackjack Road area, Hayes Road area, and we're talking like whole blocks of residents, Vermont Road area. So, you know, I think that's an exercise we really should look at, so we have a sense of how big the issue is versus quality, quantity, just so we have that information.
Councilor Colson?
I absolutely agree. If there is water to be spared, regardless of the source, whether it's through standards connecting to NAMO, what have you, I think we need data to determine, make a decision from who needs the water, where it should go. In terms of the feedback, a few residents calling in about quality issues to staff, I refer to our satisfaction survey from 2012, where 80% respondents, they're on private wells, 80% were happy with the quality and quality. So we have that kind of feedback to consider as well, before we decide where water could go, and if it's worth the cost to folks, or if they want to pay the cost.
Councilor Scott?
Question through to staff, Fred, the connection from the NAMO with size pipe, I believe that's an actual 12 inch. 12.
10 or 12? Councilor here?
Okay, so just going through the special community update, and trying to understand how this is going to work financially. So the update said that, the proposed, and I know it's all proposed, so from a financial thing, we're thinking 800,000 of the gas tax money, basically to pay for the pipe along Lansville Road, is that? And then, just so I'm clear, then for the buy-in for the Wind Chelsea area, we're going to use our reserve or internally?
So that's adopted internally, North Old South Old, but some will net council if they choose to borrow like that?
No, I believe she said Wind Chelsea.
Oh, I'm sorry, Wind Chelsea. Oh, okay, sorry, my apologies.
So that's a one? So I just, you know, big picture, me and Pi, and if we borrow internally for that, or we're thinking about it, you know, we look at our budget, and I'm just trying to figure out how that's all going to work, because we're just doing a sewer grant that will now definitely have to go to referendum, because we can't borrow internally there. If you use the gas tax money, then that's gonna, you know, I guess, it's just trying to understand how, it feels like we're using the same pots of money for lots of different things, but over and over again. So I'm just trying to understand the funding of all of this. So the goal is basically trying to use the internal money from all the reserves, right now, to fund the buy-in in the Wind Chelsea area, which we're talking about 1.3 million. And am I correct on that?
No, that's not the case. And unfortunately, Jenna is not able to be here to join us this evening, but we can certainly respond with the financial qualifications for council when future moving in.
But it's a good question, because it's also the reservoir that was tabled at 1.1 million dollars, and I think it was 496,000 dollars of funding that had not been identified for the source.
So what's staff proposed to do there, or is an application for funding available for that particular project? It's significant priorities, gas tax monies, that looks like the district would be eligible. Application deadline is April 15. We, and, you know, this will be brought forward to council during the financial planning process, where it would be our intention to make an application for grant funding for the, I believe it was 480,000. We have 1.27, that was the total cost, 10x amount has been set aside in reserves and has already been collected. Unfortunately, like I say, Jenna's not here this evening, she has prepared a spreadsheet that speaks to where the water tax money, it would be a local area service that we would be looking to establish as it relates to the phase three sewer grant application, but there would be some short-term lines that we would probably have to borrow to cover our costs as we construct it for successful application, funding for the reservoir. And then we did have internally new monies available to pay our buy-in fee, should council elect to move forward.
Councilor seven?
I think there's a couple of things as well, like we're talking about the costs of the offsite water main to connect to the Lansville system. We may decide that we don't want to do that, we just wait for somebody, a developer who wants to develop, and say, fine, if you want to develop, we pay for that water. The other thing I need to keep in mind is that, you know, this is, like I alluded before, I said, there's three components, there's the, there's the Wind Chelsea area, there's the Winds area, and there's the rest of the community. This is a 20-year deal, a 20-year agreement with an extension for another 20 years. We may not do any of this for another five, eight, 10, 15 years. The thing is, it gives us opportunities, that's what it provides us.
Councilor here?
Glad you said that, because I think it is about opportunities. I think we've got to try and think out of the box here a little bit. We're hearing that now, which is news to me, that we now can apply for a grant and able to first to fund that reservoir. Well, that's huge, because now theoretically, if we didn't have a buy-in for Wind Chelsea, we could now maybe think about, let's think about how we could get this water to existing residents now, instead of them waiting for 20 years. If we can only do so many connections, and I respect the city's and NAMO's limitations, wouldn't that be a great opportunity to turn this around, to get water to existing residents that are struggling right now? Like, to me, that makes sense, and it sounds like we can just redo our numbers, and the way we're putting our financing, and think about making that work.
Well, again, it would be quantifying where the problems are in the community.
Yeah, it's a great starting point.
Councilor Colson?
The comment about it being an opportunity, I think that's good, if it remains as an opportunity, and we don't start laying pipes in the ground next week, kind of approach, because there's a couple, couple things out there now. And we're getting a state fewer phase two water report back, standards might change, that's a game changer potentially, depending on what comes back from that. We had an email from the foothills folks, saying they had one miller, it's now would be 50 US gallons per minute, so there's that water there now. So there's a couple key things that we have to contemplate before we start chunking up water and costs, and what's paying to what?
Councilor Scott?
I think even with the NAMO connection, the reality of the situation is, even if we wanted to connect today, it's going to take us a year. By the time we go through the process of the design, and then there's the, putting the works in the ground, the pavement. the, putting the works in the ground, the payments in the Ninamal, doesn't become payable, so it's actually fully connected. So, you know, it, it's going to take at least a year, so I think one of the, I think there's a couple of things, as Councilor Seven pointed out, is, you know, the agreement is an opportunity, and the opportunity is there for, for when we want to use it. But even with that, I think we also have to look at, when we do want to do it, it's going to take some time, it's not going to happen instantly, so we always have to be cognizant of that, that if we wanted to start on it now, we're still going to be a, a year out or plus before we actually have connection. So I think we just, we have to keep that in mind when we're looking at things.
Councilor Hayden and Councilor Colson?
So, and I'm building on what you're saying, which are really good points. This is another one of those documents that I think we should take to the public, because they really haven't had an opportunity, yes, there is the open house, and for the most part, the question is asked, to my recollection, were, am I getting water? And the answer was no. Pretty much everybody, yeah, am I getting water? Am I getting, so we should take this to the residents and get their feedback on what they're thinking and how they feel this agreement works for their community, just like we're doing now with the foothills value. I think that's a starting point, we should be talking to our residents, and then we can look at getting data.
Councilor Colson and Councilor Hayden?
Sorry, the other tidbit I just want to throw is, it's one of my concerns or comments within a Ninamal agreement is the connection charge money leaves the community. So we've got $1.2 million from Wind Chelsea that goes to Nanaimo. If the Wynn's connects, it's around 1.2, 1.3 million as well, so it's two and a half million bucks leaving the community, it's huge numbers. And then if you take into account the 50 accumulated connections, over 10 years, if we can indeed use all those, that's 3 million bucks. So, you know, it's big money leaving, leaving our town. And if it's necessary, it's necessary, but I'm not sure whether it is.
Councilor Hayden? Thank you. I think it's important that the community come to a common understanding of what this agreement actually means. We've discussed a number of items tonight, specific questions, and I'm sure there's lots left unanswered. One thing that is clear is there's a lot of interpretation involved, that's extracting what this agreement actually means. It's not clear, and one can speculate at nauseous mind. I like the idea of taking the community agreement to the community, however, I would suggest that, you know, there, there already has been an open house, and that could be part of further articulating the agreement to the community. But what I think would be very valuable at this point, to give people a chance to consider it in their own time, is some sort of a question and answer sheet regarding the, the agreement. This is the agreement, and these are some likely questions that might arise from it, and just send that out.
That's what this was.
In a little bit more detail.
Yeah.
Actually, can I just comment here on that?
I'm done.
Okay, that's actually good, but could we build on that? Could you identify your water concerns? You know, do you have an issue with water? Quality, quantity? Do you, would you like to see a community water system? I just think the more feedback we get, that data is very critical to that moving forward. And we could put that all in one document.
And me satisfying, you've got anything specific for water?
Councilor Hayden? Thanks. Yeah, I don't know if they, they would both go in the same document, but certainly part of the same process, and that, a survey, we may want to design different than the document that goes out for folks to read, certainly linking the two as part of the same issue, but I think, you know, I, I think there's some real value in that. Councilor Moment?
I, I certainly like the suggestion of sending out a survey to get more specific information, I think that's a great planning tool. The way that I see this process moving forward, because there's so many different moving pieces, what's, what's possible, what the, what the, what the water agreement provides for, possibilities with the foothills, possibilities with our well field management study, and I think we probably would have to wait for more specific results from that, which thankfully is not going to take that long for the degree. But the way that I would find it most, most manageable would be if we got perhaps a series of, of scenarios of the kinds of, the kind of implementation steps that we could take. I mean, I don't have a set number of them, but let's say, you know, four scenarios that identify costs, possible funding sources, where the water would go, and, and it would also identify what some of the other priorities are. For example, you know, we could, if, if, if there's a development proposal from the G property, and there's some, some financial contribution available in order to take the pipe up, up to north wind, south wind, then that is going to be a more viable area of service than somewhere where we may have to put the whole bill, and that just might be more viable in the short term, although obviously, as, as, as has been indicated, the agreement identifies that the agents provide water for the whole community or certainly areas that need it. There's also, as I mentioned earlier, I, I'd really like to get water into the properties in the downtown core, and water into the commercial area of the downtown core, which is hopefully going to increase our, our commercial tax base, and is hopefully going to decrease the, the tax responsibility for the other residents, so that would be, you know, another part of the scenario that I'd like to see. But then we can at least have some, a basis in which we can start looking at how we can move around these pieces, and obviously, we're not necessarily going to pick one or another, but at least we'll have something that we can move forward on, you know, given what, what we all know some of the priorities are.
Just in terms of the public engagement side, one of the challenges with regards to the water side is there's, there are those people, for example, the people in the Wynn's, Somonhead, in Wood Acres area, Blackjack, etc., they are existing residents that need water. People on Wood Acres area have not drank out of the tap in 15 years, they got the... Why, sorry, Canadian Springs, thank you, Jen is sitting there. Natasha up in the Wynn's area, certainly there's, there's challenges there. The separation of needs versus new development, for example, is something that we've got to be very, very cognizant of, because in terms of the information that we get back, we have to somehow delineate between, or attempt to delineate, between those people that, for example, are saying no because they don't need water, those people that are saying no because they fear development, and those people that are saying yes because they want to develop, and those people are saying yes because they need it. Because, for example, in terms of, of a change in standards, if that frees up connections, we have to step back and say, okay, where can we best utilize these connections? And, and village corp is a possibility. The ability to, to extend the system towards, say, the Wood Acres area might be much more cost-effective, easier than the Wynn's in terms of it. So I agree, we need more information, no doubt at all about that. We just have to be very careful on how we craft it, so that how we interpret the information we get is more accurate.
And, and I fully agree with that, I think, but there's, there's also a chicken and egg scenario too, the first question anybody's going to ask, what comes in cost?
Yep.
So, you know, and, and I don't know what the, the best process is for, for doing it, but obviously, we need to know general indication that people are interested. And then we need to look at what a cost is, and I think we almost need to do those before we go to the public, we need supporter of magnitude costs. So, you know, to go to the Wynn's, this is how much is quite a cost, with the information we have right now, but this, of course, you know, like there's contributions from the G property or whatever, other properties, using Wynn's as an example, or if we're taking to Wood Acres or to Coopers in the Blackjack area, but, you know, like the reality with the Blackjack area is until probably the, the quite a low property develops, the reality is, it's probably not going to live, it's just, it's too long, it's a bit too, it's just too costly.
But on the flip side, you talk about taking it up to the Wynn's, which is a lot longer. But, but I hear what you're saying, versus, say, Wood Acres, that's much closer, relatively closer.
But then larger lots.
Yes, yes.
So density.
And, and even with those larger lots, you know, for example, the people that I've spoken to in that area, I'll use the Canadian Springs one as an example, have they attempted to drill another well in the park? No. So in, in some cases, they're making, I would suggest that some people are making the conscious decision to accept their situation, which may be related to mine, what they're willing to pay for a lot of it. Councilor Hayden?
Just following up on Councilor Scott, I agree, we need to get that data, but we also need to get that data without the cost of development and with the cost of...
The scenarios that Councilor...
Yeah, just because I'm not sure how that whole developer, the property is going to fly, or...
We break it down into segments, and...
Yeah, we got to get it on a detail.
Well, possibly another, you know, be the best way to approach it, recognizing the time, the effort, and difficulties, and costing, and that, and the possible scenarios, is questioning people, what are you, what's it worth to you?
Yeah.
You know, I'm going to bring them up again, but the Wood Acres people, there are people there that have great water, that are more than willing to pay their share of the cost because their neighbors have water. There are other people that can't afford it, so, so getting some indication and possibilities there, that may be an opposite approach. Councilor Colson?
Sorry, one more, no, again, so it's a complex task, and many components, water, development economics, and so while we're in this, the brainstorming phase, I think residents involve a void, and when you start to hone in on some of the legal aspects or something, then you kind of branch off and finalize and then present something, but I think it's a critical part to keep, keep residents involved a void, so they know what's going on.
Mr. Mayor, you asked a question whether the local area service initiative or petition would involve land improvements or just land, or just improvements? And, and the answer is that if you do a local area service by initiative, which is most, or by a petition, some common one, or initiative, which is the second most common one, it's 50% of the owners, 50% of their property value, and it's the assessed value, not the paraffinability, of land and improvements at that time.
Okay, so what is...
Yeah, land and improvements, in the same way you're doing an initiative. And then the third option, you're doing local area services to have a referendum in the area.
Thank you. Anything further? Councilor Hayden?
So how do we move this forward? How do we tackle, we give staff some time to think about how we gather this data, or how we put this questionnaire together, or?
If I may?
Sure.
Because we have our strategic planning that council held, water was a item of that strategic planning session, and I'm sure we could wrap those items into that report that goes back to council.
Good. And I was going to suggest, we also do have a separate court that we've commissioned and allocated monies to that would address potentially the standard side. Because that's a relatively short period of time, I would suggest we wait for that before we try to construct this, because that might provide some great clarity, you know, with regards to where we can go without, it builds a bigger picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think there's any urgent rate, you know, other than those people that need water, but it's, it's your, your plus add anyway, even if you were to say fair today, so. Is there anything further on? Sorry, in terms of the meeting itself, just a question to staff, I just, just realized there's no section on here that refers to public participation. I didn't notice that one included that.
I'm certainly going to go ahead and make that into council support.
Okay, Council, Council Scott, Council Colson, discussion, all in favor, opposed, motion carried, you get all that, Tru?
Got it.
Okay, public participation side with regards to tonight's agenda. Sorry, state your name and address, please. Always going to use the podium.
Well, what's that before we went all through it?
Brendan was going to take it away from me.
Sorry, Brendan, we forgot to move.
Yeah, I thought you got laid.
I think as most of you know, I used to work for the Urban District to run the water system, and then we've gone to the Ranger District, ran nine water systems, behind Elizabeth Water, so water is a passion of mine, and I think the conversation you had tonight was fantastic. So I really support the idea of looking at the big ditch or getting the information and making a ready concern, so, congratulations.
Thank you. Further public participation? Name and address.
Lucy, you were shot, six, seven, eight, four, are we, right? I would just, first of all, I congratulate, participating, just listening was free participation for them, and for the most part, I congratulate the council on their high level of discussion. I really appreciate it. And I have a very complex but simple question on the water. I know about King and Harvard Drive. If I wanted to stay on our current system, community well system, and not plug into the Ninamal water, even though everybody else around me did, is that possible? And I don't expect an answer today, but...
No, it's not.
Your house is opposed to your neighborhood?
Yeah.
Yeah, not unless we twin pipes. So, okay, that's too bad, because you guys need your water. Councilor Colson?
You'll boil water.
I don't have the public Q and A thing, wasn't there the village that popped up? I thought we had like a condition.
Only through a local service if you voted down the...
Like the Arcton social.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, but...
So the areas...
The Wind Chelsea will get boiled water.
Well, possibly you're on the front of the wall.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, but for the...
That might be cheaper than connecting, thank you. Yeah, but you're, you're in the service area, so effectively you'd be at the tax part anyway, you have to drill.
You just say, of course, the tax part, you're...
Yeah. Just like sewers.
Yes. Interesting thought.
Okay.
Which would raise the question, sewer goes up there, how does it go? Sorry. For the public participation. Hearing none? Somebody want to do a Brian Dempsey?
I'm going to, Councilor Colson, the lead of the public, to the public, suing the section 91, one, by the title, we started with the purpose in consideration, we received advice and subject is listed applying early, we put the communication on necessary for the purpose.
Second by, oh?
Mr. McCree, I'll go ahead and pause, 91A.
Oh, sorry.
Chris Moncrief, I guess, I've more than a joke. The board said they considered your position as council, but our agent is probably only the position of 30 hours' time. You had referred to...
Yes, I agree with that as well.
Your sector? Say my Councilor Seven, all in favor, opposed, motion carried.